Welcome to our City Commission meeting. We're going to open with a prayer from Pastor Nicole Martin from Messiah Lutheran Church, followed by the pledge led by General McQueen. Please rise.
As I was preparing for today, one phrase lingered in my mind. To be a servant is the mission here. As a pastor, a mom, a Navy wife, and an Army kid, and now a volunteer with the PCPD, I have a pretty good understanding of a servant's heart. It will do great and amazing good with little thanks and praise. It is often the most utilized but least rewarded person in the pack, focusing not on the dollar, but how it can help another. The servant's heart will stick its neck out when others withdraw, will run into action while others shelter in place. To be a servant is the mission here, for it is the servant's heart that makes this city go. The servant's heart of Panama City wade through the muck of sewage and the crimes of hate. They plan destination celebrations and pick up trash. They keep grass cut low and fields ready for play. They often work when the rest of us are sleeping, and they sacrifice family meals and holidays to ensure the health of the community. They answer phones and direct traffic, all while following protocol, meeting safety standards, and filling out oogles of paperwork to meet the city, county, state, and federal regulations. We pray for all of them, dear Lord, as they set their task today and the days to come, keep them safe from all harm. But we also pray especially for the servants sitting here today, this panel of leaders, as they are called not just to be part of the mission, but to establish the mission. Let your hand be upon them, guiding their words and thinking. Give them the wisdom of Solomon to discern and judge rightly how to develop the community. Give them the ingenuity of Jacob, who knew how to make a thoughtful plan that would support his family and prosper his fortune. Give them the generosity of Joseph, who welcomed his brothers when he could have turned them out cold and provided for them during the threat of famine. Give them the compassion of Christ to make bold decisions that bring healing and restoration for those they serve. Bless each of these leaders to shine as a glorious example of commitment to the service for the success of the mission and the well-being of this community, Panama City. In honor and reverence to the one who breathes life, saves life, empowers life, Father, Son, and Holy Spirit, let it be so. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we call a roll, please?
Mayor Bernicki.
I'm here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Rader.
Here.
Commissioner Streep.
Here.
Commissioner Halagus.
Here.
Mayor, you have quorum.
Okay, we have the minutes from the June 28th meeting. Everybody had a chance to read those ahead of time, any additions, deletions, so say at this time or entertain a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
Yes, Mayor, I have read the minutes from the City Commission meeting of June 28th of 2022, and I'd like to move approval of them.
Second a motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call a roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Streep.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
General, do we have any additions, deletions, or modifications to the agenda?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, the notice of term expiration on the Board of Trustees for the supplemental retirement plan. The Board for the supplemental retirement plan has designated general employees as two positions for your terms expire on July 22nd, 2026. Please be advised that the clerk has not received any applications for these two positions. So, please, if you're interested, if you know someone that may be interested, get a hold of Janet City Hall, let's get those positions filled. The Board of Trustees for Retirement Plan and Trust for General Employees of the City has a position open for two-year term that expires August 14th, 2024. Please be advised, the current member Tiffany Heinz has expressed an interest in remaining on the board. So if anyone else is interested, please send in your application, and we'll consider it. We have community event announcements. Our final teen Tuesday, Paint Night took place June 28th at the Panama City Center for the Arts. The six-month program co-hosted by Palmetto Paint PC was free to all teens and parents. City of Panama City, in conjunction with the Xylo Dance Studios, hosting an eight-week summer enrichment program at Oakland Terrace Clubhouse. Students attending the camp are participating in STEAM curriculum as well as weekly field trips, skating, tumbling, dance classes, horseback riding, and more. Downtown Panama City came alive once again July the 4th for an incredible day of music, patriotism, and fun, celebrating the birth of our great nation. This nation's annual event, titled Salute to Freedom, featured a parade, live music, and a spectacular fireworks display sprawling over historic St. Andrews Bay. This amazing event was co-sponsored by the City of Panama City and Destination Panama City. We're taking it back to nature this summer with Sunrise Yoga from now until August 17th at Asbell and Sunset Yoga from now until August 25th at Oaks by the Bay. This year, the City of Panama City is teaming up with Florida Blue to connect mind, body, and soul in a relaxing green space. For more information about this nine-week program, go to panamacity.gov. Parents, bring your school-aged children out to Daffin Park July 23rd for a day of fun at the City of Panama City Back to School Rollout. This year, we're offering games, hot dogs, snow cones, and even free haircuts. Kids can also interact with first responder vehicles in our Touch a Truck event. As an added, extra added bonus, the first 200 kids will receive a free backpack loaded with all the necessities to help them get the school year started right. This event runs from 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. Don't miss it. We are excited to announce Phase One of the MLK Recreation Center revitalization has finally arrived. Beginning in August, demolition crews will begin dismantling the hurricane-damaged center in preparation for the construction of this new state-of-the-art facility. Over the next few weeks, look for crews to be out at the site erecting fencing, locating and disconnecting utilities, and preparing the site for demolition. As we get closer to demolition day, we will update you on the exact date and time for this process to begin. We appreciate everyone's patience as we continue to navigate this progression. We look forward to the completion of these projects and are excited to see it start. Okay, at this time, we'll have audience participation. We have people that have signed up to speak. You have to give your name and your address. This is for things that are not on the agenda today. And so, first speaker will be Derek Thomas.
Good morning, Derek Thomas, 1100 West 10th Street. I went to the planning board yesterday, it was pretty interesting. I noticed that they didn't have any kind of three-dimensional maps of where they were talking about changing the zoning and putting in very high-density housing complexes. But if you look at the satellite map, the green spaces that they seem to be targeting to put these high-density developments, they're green because nobody's ever built on them. They had taxes, haven't gone up, even when during the 2008 housing boom, everyone else's taxes went way up. But parts of the city that weren't developed and haven't been developed up to this point weren't developed because they're in low-lying areas. If you develop them, then the entire neighborhood doesn't drain properly. And so, I don't know if they can change it, some have to do a topographical map on top of the maps that they're showing. But when you're developing this place, I know we all need housing, but I would encourage you to drive past the places and look, if that's a part of the drainage system, don't just develop it. And if you do actually go out and get involved purchasing the old paper mill site, I'd like to suggest maybe an aquarium, because that would be a good draw for people to come in here. That doesn't have to be the only thing you do, but it's apparently huge, and they got a 20 million gallon water facility already there. So it might be nice, we're near the water. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Michelle Clay.
Good morning, my name is Michelle Clay, 803 East 10th Street. Good morning, Mayor and City Commissioners. I just want to start off by saying it's a great time to be in the City of Panama City. Downtown is growing, St. Andrews is growing, and the area around 23rd Street just won't stop growing. This is why I'm so very optimistic about the task of building a better bay, which leads me into the question which was asked by myself at the Monday Morning Manager Meeting. There are areas such as Glenwood and Millville which are not growing at all, specifically the Glenwood area. While there will be housing and affordable housing being built, MLK being rebuilt, the question is, why would anyone want to live in that area when it's a food desert, lack of shopping, restaurants, and family fun? My question during the Morning Manager Meeting was, does the city feel like the P3 is effective? And if not, what changes could be made to bring businesses to area where the only thing there to offer is a P3? I did some research, and over the past three years, P3s have been on the rise, or the past three decades, excuse me, P3s have been on the rise. But data shows that middle-income areas have advantages, and businesses are open to P3s, while in low-income areas such as Glenwood, developers, investors don't have the capital to invest, and so P3s lack the sustained enthusiasm by investors who want to build in low-income areas. As many banks will not fund P3s in areas such as low-income and areas such as Glenwood. Maybe a reassessment needs to be made for areas that they typically don't work in, and the data shows that it doesn't work. Thank you so much.
Okay, next, we have Robert Coffey.
I'm Robert Coffey, I live on King's Road, and at this time, I have no comment. I signed up erroneously. I apologize.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Okay, yeah, no problem.
He's coming back.
Okay.
Good, good, good. Henrietta Barnes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Henrietta Barnes, 617 Maple Avenue, Panama City. A few meetings ago, I had a problem with transport. I mean, people speeding in our communities, 6th, 7th, and Maple Avenue. And I would just like to thank you all for putting peoples in place to slow the traffic and thinking about our children running and playing into the streets if they're in the streets. And it has been, progress has been made, and I saw that, and we want you to just continue. And I just want to say thank you all for a job well done.
Thank you, Ms. Barnes.
Welcome. Thanks, Chief.
Yeah, thanks, Chief.
Back there in the back, he does the work, we just, we're here. Neet Buehl, Janet Harper.
We signed up on the issue.
Okay, talk then, got it, all right. Okay, Gilbert.
Good morning, everyone, how you doing?
Good morning.
Good. As you guys know, I am Gilbert Hamadi Trigo Deli, downtown Panama City on Harrison Avenue. I'm kind of surprised that ever since the construction project has started, nobody has come to my restaurant, as you guys know, I'm a lunchtime kind of business, and check with me, see how the construction affected my business in any way. And I just want to give you guys a kind of an update, so what's going on with my business.
I was there since we started.
Did you talk to me, did you tell me you sat down?
You were behind the counter, but go ahead, I don't want to take your time.
No, I'm not saying you didn't come over, I just, somebody sat down and said, hey, Gilbert, how are things going? Things are not going so well. My business is down 30%. My senior citizen, 90% of them I lost because of the fact they can't find any parking spaces. I know it's an old story, I've spoken to a lot of you about it over the years. It's kind of hard for my customers to find parking during lunchtime when you have all the people that work on Harrison Avenue parking on Harrison Avenue. This is a problem that we've had for years and years, and nothing's been done about it. And I do understand that meter parking is coming, but we're talking about two years down the road, a year and a half, two years down the road. The question is, can I survive all that time with my business being down? I need, we need some kind of help to enforce the parking downtown, please. I'm begging you guys, I know the DIB is working on something like that, we need to kind of push it, you know, the longer we delay it, the longer I'm suffering. And I'm only the only restaurant right now, once you get down to the next block over, it's going to get worse, especially for all the other restaurants. So please, guys, please, let's do something about the parking downtown. This is a big problem, I know it's a good problem to have per se, but not when all the people that work on Harrison Avenue park on Harrison Avenue during the daytime. That's all I wanted to say, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gilbert. I would like to add, because Mark, I had a conversation with you about it, you can sit, I guess he's supposed to sit.
Well, I have spoken to Mark and Jared, and you, Janet, I mean, you've helped me out tremendously, Jared has helped me out, Mark has helped me out, it just, we got to enforce it somehow, we got to find a way.
Truth be told, we haven't been able to help him tremendously. And I did go physically talk to people that owned stores or offices, it's not the stores, I didn't get stores, but offices there, and they made it sound like it wasn't going to be a big deal, and they were going to have their people park back there, but then apparently that's not what's happened. And I know that we are going to have metered parking, and we're going to do all that, but that is too long. And like he said, I mean, then he's going to have this parking, and then the restaurants down there might have a little bit, and they've even got it better because they got behind the Martin Theater, you know what I mean? So it's not, nothing is as bad as what you're going through right now.
Yes.
And I don't, I know that we probably don't have, you know, this, I don't know if it's code enforcement, I don't know who it is, but it's just that stretch, that's all he's asking, is that stretch right there, to enforce the two-hour parking for the next 18 months, or until we get to that section where it's closed anyway, or whatever, I think we can do more.
I really appreciate it.
I think we can.
Anything to help me survive, and don't forget, you got other restaurants coming in, they're going to probably go through the same problem.
Sure.
Eventually, once all this is done.
But yours is specifically worse than the others, because there's really not any parking for you.
We'll address it.
I appreciate it.
No, we need to do something, and we should have helped you tremendously.
Thank you, guys, so much, have a great day.
Thank you, sorry you had to come here, Gilbert.
Thank you for, Commissioner, for shedding light on that, too.
Heather.
To add to that really quick, there is a parking solution that I gave to Jared and Mark, the premium parking one, that is one that we could execute quickly. It's app-based, it doesn't require a lot of things, so that would be one thing, if you guys want to look at that in your time.
The easiest, less complicated thing would be.
That's correct. Exactly.
First item, Mayor, on the agenda that I have is...
I'm sorry, is there, with regard to that two-hour parking, you know, we can look at that with regard to the police chief. We do have the DIB that we lean on for, as a future parking authority for the city, particularly with regard to the downtown, and look forward to having a parking solution with regard to an app that can be utilized. But it will, it will be labor-intensive to have to roll through and ensure two-hour parking is held, too.
There's got to be something we can do, but, yeah. And preferably not DIB yet, because it will have to come up with, you know...
That's right, there's a whole comprehensive plan, that's right.
Thank you.
First item I have is a first reading of ordinance 3082 prohibiting unlicensed commercial use.
I did not write my name on it, I spoke to someone, I need to say something.
Okay.
Walter P. Henry, 614 Maple Avenue. I didn't want to come up here today, but what I've heard from my commissioner, I thank God for what she's done. When anyone write me a complaint out of my neighborhood, I don't just hear them, I go where the complaint is. I look at it, look at it myself, I look at the problem myself. I know protocol. I did protocol. When you know protocol don't work for you, you go to the source, and the commissioner's is our source. When anybody that you have hired to take care of the city, operate the city, nobody is man enough or later enough to call and say, I'm still investigating, I'm still looking. I went to Jared, talked to him about this problem, he knew what I'm talking about. Talked to, I talked to the city manager about it, where he wouldn't know what was going on. I told, I called Commissioner Brown, talked to him. Now, I don't have a reason to lie. Your employees probably frightened to tell the truth, scared they're going to lose their job, or somebody going to get mad with them, shouldn't be. I work for the city, I know the city, I know your operations, and I know some of you, how you, some folks, how they does. But, but we are, you know, we are here, we're to help our citizens. We can let water run for months, years. I don't see leaks in Panama City. They're leaking for months and years. And when your customer come to you and say, I got a problem with my bill, caused of a sub-problem that the city made, there's no way, the water bill is not going up if the water going back through the meter. It gonna make the meter run backwards, not going to do that. You shut off a meter, and you don't do a corrective check, and check with folk, and you cut it on. Air's in that line, pressure's there, that water pushes, if it galvanized, it'll break something loose in that line. Either you get sand going through the line while you're fixing it, causing a problem.
Thank you, Mr. Henry. We'll address whichever, where you're talking about, we can't do it right now, but, thank you.
Well, I just want to, you tell me that, Mayor.
Well, we'll get the address and figure out...
I don't give the address to my commissioner.
Okay.
But I want to know that, you know, do, don't tell folk something.
Thank you, Mr. Henry.
I believe you think about, don't tell folk something, and don't get back with them and know what's going on.
All right.
First item is proposed ordinance 3082 prohibiting unlicensed commercial use on boat ramps in city parks. This is an item that came to the city staff's attention after Bay County adopted an ordinance. The problem that Bay County saw was that there was commercial activity going on on public boat ramps, and the commercial activity was so intense that it was hard to find parking for families. It was, there were licenses, I mean, tickets being sold over the internet, people being picked up for pontoon boats or other type of commercial activity, and it was crowding out the original and intended use of the boat ramps for the public, for the families. And because of that, Bay County adopted an ordinance, and the ordinance prohibits the commercial activity of public boat ramps, ramps that are paid for by the public, used by the public, unless there is a license that is granted by the county. When that occurred, the city staff was curious what would happen in Panama City, and the issue migrated toward the city. In particular, Carl Gray Park is a problem area for safety, for parking, for the, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars were spent with federal grant money to protect and to build up the boat ramp and the parking for the use of the public, and it is a, it's a problem area. So in light of that, the staff has recommended that the City Commission consider adopting a ordinance that's very, very similar to Bay County, that would provide consistency in how all boat ramps are operated, whether it's in the unincorporated area or within the city. It would provide, although there is not a provision right now, because this is a first reading, that if the City Commission did want to grant license for commercial activities at public parks, like it does with farmer's markets, or it does other commercial activities at public spaces, that certainly can be done. So this is the proposal. Bay County separated the parks between neighborhood parks, which they just prohibited commercial activity, and then other neighborhood boat ramps, and then other boat ramps which allow activity with a license. That has not been accomplished yet, as far as in this ordinance, there is a big blank space, but it is there for discussion, and it is substantially similar to what the county has, and this is a first reading, if the Commission wishes to do so.
I think that, I'm sure we have people to speak on this issue today, usually it's not until the second reading, so I think we'll do the first reading, and then we'll have ample time for everyone to come up, and then also the, our commissioners can voice their opinion. So if everyone's okay with that, we'll have first reading, and then basically to see if there's anything that needs to be tweaked in between. Go ahead.
Ordinance number, first reading of ordinance number 3082. An ordinance of the Board of the City of Panama City, Florida, amending the City's Code of Ordinance, Subpart A, general ordinances, protection of public and private rights, prohibit, prohibition for public boat ramps in recreational areas, repealing all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, providing for separability, and providing for an effective date.
If you want to speak on this issue, you can do so at this time, come up, give your name, your address, you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, Lynn Schneider, 236 Wilson Avenue, Panama City, Florida. So I looked over this, and I understand that there's an issue with the boat ramps, but my concern has to do more with the park area. When you look at the first page letter, there's not a process in there for people to get a permit to do any type of commercial activity. I don't know how often you're down in St. Andrews and get to observe activities at the park there, but there's a fitness class that meets there, there's a yoga class that meets there, there's lots of, there's professional photographers doing photo shoots there. That all falls under commercial activity, and if this goes out to law enforcement like this, one of our wonderful Panama City Police Enforcement people are going to be out there, and somebody's going to get a ticket for something that, I don't think this is what the scope of this is. I think that this was to impact large, more commercial type, not an individual out there teaching 10 people how to run faster. So I have a problem with that, and that if it is to regulate that, then we probably ought to have that process in place to get the permit prior to creating this, because then there's going to be this lag of time about when those classes are going to be offered, and I think that's problematic. It's also the impact with this, what happens to things like the festival, the Gulf Coast Jazz Festival, there's vendors there, is this going to impact that? Is that something that we've looked at, or?
Yeah, it would be, I don't want to get, I don't want to...
Yeah, but I mean, so I'm not sure if that's something, is that, that's certainly commercial activity. And even the guy that does the horse-drawn carriage at Christmas, you know, he picks his people up there. So, you know, how are we going to resolve that? As far as the ramps go, all of the people that we're talking about, those are individuals that came up with a business model based on what the laws were in effect. And at this point, if we do this right now and it becomes effective, they have no recourse. It's too late to find any other place, there's no place to find, get a new, maybe slip a boat someplace, change all of their advertising. I understand this is an issue, but I also understand the season's half over, and maybe the thing to do would be to have this come into effect on September 1st, or after the Labor Day weekend, to give those individuals who have been through the hurricane with us, I mean, these are our neighbors, they've been through a hurricane with us, they've been through pandemic with us, and they're just trying to make a living, too. Like I said, I understand it needs to be addressed, but maybe we could do it in a way that's a little more kinder, or a little more gentler, and I believe that, that's my comments, so thank you.
Thank you.
Haven't seen y'all in a long time. Captain James Spick, 2508 West 10th Street. I'm going to surprise you and tell you that I'm for this, although Lynn was right, the season doesn't end until November, December now. I'd like to see you go one step further. I'd like for you to make every commercial vessel that's operating in the marinas show proof of insurance and buy a license from the city to use the launches. Keep an eye on it. We have a lot of people that are fly-by-nights, they're not legitimate guides or legitimate captains, they're operating illegally, and so this way, the city could actually know who is there. Give us a sticker to put on our car, give us a sticker to put on our boat, at least you know who we were, and you could keep track of it that way. And also create some money for the city that could possibly go back into the boat launches and things like that. We don't have... We don't have enough boat launches, I wish you guys would look at that a little bit more, and, but, but moving us all out, or cutting it off, I think is a little bit overkill. When you could raise money, and, you know, I'm not really big on government getting my money, but you could make this easier on people, instead of just saying, no more. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners?
I think, I think he wanted, did you want to come up?
Oh, yeah, okay.
Again, for the record, my name is Rob Coffey. I live on three-three oh five Kings Row, and yes, I do pay city taxes, county taxes, and proudly. Been very happy about the development efforts that have happened here. My concern is the boat ramp. Yes, we had a storm, it took away a marina, I used to have my boat there, I have a couple boats, I am a licensed captain, have been since the nineteen nineties, and taking away another avenue until we have marinas fixed, I think that that should be kind of the duration before we try to step out and, you know, take away any boat launches or anything else. It's, uh, it's quite challenging right now to, to get around the mayhem, so to speak, until we have things corrected. And I, obviously, just because it's good for Panama City Beach, it doesn't necessarily mean that it's good for Panama City. I mean, out there, around the Dolphin Street, and some of that ongoing, and yes, I've run boats out there too, and picked up people there when we were doing such. That's a little different, that was in a neighborhood. St. Andrews over there at that boat ramp, that's not a neighborhood, that's one that the parking has dwindled beyond belief, and it's more crowded now than ever. And that's different than what the cases were on the beach. Carl Gray is more of a public parking area than what you have on the beach. So what's good for the beach doesn't necessarily mean it's good for Panama City. And please, if there are any considerations of going forward to a business, I would hope that you would consider it post-marina repairs, give us all an opportunity to have our boats somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay, commissioners?
Mayor, I guess I could, I guess I could lead off.
Okay.
This morning. The first time I got wind of this was Friday evening, when I received a text from a, a citizen that owns a little business in St. Andrews area, and it would affect him if it was passed as it is. And, and so I asked him, I said, well, do you have a business license, you know? Yeah, for his business, he does. And so then I got the reading, I've read this, I think I've read this thing twenty-five times, and it's even a little confusing to me, and I like what the last gentleman said. You know, we, what's good for one area may not be good for another area. Now, that's hard to decipher, but I do believe that with all of my heart. And I may be wrong, but from what I've received in just the past twenty-four, forty-eight hours, I, my phone's been, has been blowing up since Sunday, I don't know why they chose to call me, but they chose, a lot of these boat captains called me. And there's an organization called Panama City Fishing Guide Association, that brings approximately five thousand people into St. Andrews area. Now, I can't tell you where they come from, if it's the beach, or, or why they're bringing them here, or if they're boarding there and going to Shell Island, but if they're not paying taxes and don't have a license, then that needs, that's something that needs to be addressed, you know? You know, you, it's, it's not a freebie, you know, businesses are having to pay taxes, you own a restaurant, you gotta pay. And so, and, and, and one of these gentlemen that called me said, and he said, Billy, he said, I had my boat at the city marina before Hurricane Michael, and now I, I have nowhere to put my boat, you know? So I, I've, I've got questions with that, and, and I know there's a lot of people that are, that understand things more than I do, and I'm, I'm not a boater that has a business down there, but, but I, well, when we bring people across to St. Andrews, whether they get out for an hour or two hours, or whatever, they're going to eat in restaurants, they might go into a store and buy something, and, and I, there's a ripple effect, but if we've got a problem with parking, a problem with Carl Gray Park, with, where our local citizens cannot use the public park, then we've got a problem, we've got to address that. How do we do that? I don't know, I don't have an answer, but I'm not prepared, I'm glad we're not voting on it today, because I, it is confusing to me, and I hope what I've said has made a little bit of sense, because I'm not an authority on this, I, I'm not, I don't pretend to be, you know? It's not music related. I always have, have a little humor once in a while, but I have, I have owned boats in the past, but never a commercial boat, just one that we kept at the house. So, Mayor, you, you're a voter, you, you vote more than anybody in this town on this commission, probably, and you may have more input than, I like what Mr. Pick said too, you know? So, I just, I just, I'm going to slow down, and it's the first reading, and the first reading is simply to discuss, and so I respect that, and our staff respects that, and that's why we're here, so we're not prepared to vote, we may not be prepared to vote at the next meeting. So, if anyone else from the commission would like to speak up, I would love to hear your thoughts on this subject matter. Thank you.
Josh, you want to go next?
Yeah. So, a couple of things that are just for defining, I would like to see, like, a defined timeline for start, I mean, we are mid-season, so that's one. But the second thing, a couple of things that popped up as I was doing the review, and we had a little bit of time to talk about this yesterday, was currently, right now, we cannot extend an occupational license to a business that does not have a physical location. I'd like us to see how we can address that, because that's going to be the biggest hurdle in creating some type of, of permitting process, and I think to the point of, but, first of all, boating captains, we want you, in St. Andrews, so we, we, we love the tourism that you bring, we want to see you operate, what we're trying to do with, and I think what staff has attempted to do here, is try to create some type of parameter so that we can regulate it, so that ultimately, we don't have fifteen jet ski operators at Carl Gray Park that, you know, that now no local residents can, can enjoy the park. So there does have to be some kind of parameters, and that's one of the things I'd like to see, like, how many permits will we issue? That was one of the things I noticed with the beach, the, the beach particular ordinance, there is a set number of permits to each public area, so, like, how many is that, those kind of, it's more or less, I, I do think it's a good thing to regulate unlicensed activity, unlicensed commercial activity, I don't think that's a bad thing, but we do have to provide a good, clear process to whatever that licensing component is, so that, obviously, the, the people that are operating their businesses, they have a mechanism to which they can go through, it's reasonable, it's fair, it's a good governmental process, so that they can continue to operate and do so in a manner that does not impede the general public's use of public spaces. So, that's kind of my thought. So, I do think this one, as it reads today, is, is too far-reaching, and I think if we provide that mechanism for permitting, I think that would lessen a lot of the tension here, and is really, I think, more, and I don't know how everybody else's concerns are, that's really my biggest concern, is making sure that we've got a way to get these guys licenses, you know, provide that proof of insurance, I think that's a great, that's a great point, you know, those kind of things. Not that it's a two thousand dollar a year permit, or something like that, I mean, something that allows us to make sure that we can regulate it appropriately, because what did happen, and what is pushing this towards the front, is as soon as Bay County, as soon as the beach tightened up on their ordinance, it just pushed everybody across the bridge, and a lot of you guys have been operating for years, but we have a lot of new operators too, and so we're trying to find a way that we can manage that better. So, that's my comments.
Well, I agree with Josh, that I am so grateful and thankful for all the charter boats, kayaking, the yogas at parks, the running, fitness, I mean, the more the merrier. That, that's the point, is we didn't want a sleepy town anymore, and that we wanted all this activity going, so I just had a couple of things, first of all, this is really vague, there was, to your point, there's, there's, we don't, we don't know what the application process is, don't know what the permit fees are, there's, there was no list of the parks, like, it just said neighborhood and commercial, and I agree, I don't remember exactly who it was, who said, in my mind, of all of our boat ramps, or our marina facility, any kind of water access we have, the only one that would qualify as a neighborhood, to me, would probably be Bob George in Millville. And after talking to some of these guys, and listening to what they have to say, I think that, personally, I think we need to treat it like we have everything else that pops up, that we're really not sure what to do, and, like, with the, you know, the bar situation and all that, when all that came around, and we were like, oh, we're going to close everything at two, and then what we did is we just stopped, and we said, let's meet with the people who care about it, who are licensed and who are insured, and let staff get with them and come up with a good ordinance that fits and supports what we do want, which is all of, I do, I do want all this commerce going on. The Carl Gray parking situation, to me, feels like a, a little bit of a, an excuse, because a lot of this season during this time, you can park at Gulf Coast, you can par, I mean, you know, I understand having, I like the idea, like Josh, I like the idea of having a permit, not at some cost, you know, great cost, but just something so that staff, you know, code enforcement, the police, like, everybody knows that they're allowed to be there, but not a big, not a whole bunch of policy and a whole bunch of, of things, or that there's overkill of it, right? Like, you were talking about the jet ski thing, that'd be kind of crazy, right? If there was all that going on. We talked about the Panama City Marina, and actually, when the marina was developed, and it was bonded on cigarette tax, it was for commercial use. So, we do want it for our people, but we need to consider that it was supposed to be a revenue generator, and that is one of the, one of the ways that it was, I think it was nineteen fifty-eight. So, I guess what, I just don't feel like we're quite, I don't feel like we're even close to being ready in this ordinance, and I would much rather staff meet, that, that's what I'd like to do, is, I, I don't think it just needs to be here in two weeks, I'd like to just say, hey, let's knock this off, and let staff go and, and vet this stuff out with all these guys that have been here for a long time, and, and girls, or whoever's working at these things. I mean, Brad from Sun Jammer's made a really good point, when he was like, I mean, here they've been there forever, and they use the launch as a test driving, their kayaks, you know? So, you know, and then one of the conversations was, well, they're, they're doing their commerce that they're building, and it's like, well, these people are doing online, I mean, there is, this ordinance doesn't, doesn't cover anything, it doesn't, it, it's just, it actually will think, I think, will make things a lot more cloudy. So I would say that we just, we put this to the side until, till we can get with all these guys, and let, you know, figure out how we're going to, the best way to do it. Okay, I see your face down there, why?
Brown.
Go ahead, Dave.
No, I mean, seriously, maybe I missed-
Commissioner time, go ahead.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm not a fisherman, I'm not even a boater.
You work too much.
Yes, nah, that's what I love, helping people, and I do look out for them. But my experience with a, becoming on a boat as a fisherman, when I was real small in Blountstown, Florida, my father took me fishing, I ate all the cheese and bait, and then I went to sleep. And the next incident that I had, I was on, working at the Cabana Diner, and a guy jumped off a boat and ran me, that's the fastest I've ever ran in my life. So with me, I'm here to say that I listen to the people, I listen to the citizens, and I listen to, to everyone that's come up. I will decide what I feel would do after I listen to the citizens and listen to the people. I'll wait on them to give me a call.
I, I guess, do you want to go before me, or should, you can, you can finish up. One of the things that, that I've always been an advocate of, I don't want private industry competing with government, and so, you know, the government owns these boat ramps, and so if we've got people that are, like, Scotty's over there across, on the other side of ninety-eight, he rents out all these different things, and, and so he's paying property taxes, so he's paying the rent for the people to operate on the other side of the street at Carl Gray, so they can rent it out cheaper and put money in their pocket, because Scotty's helping them out. Well, that's just not right. So, I mean, that's one of the situations that we've got here, we've got all these businesses over there that have camped out on our, on our city boat ramps, because, first of all, they can't do it at the county anymore. So yes, something has to be addressed now. As far as the licensing, some of the stuff that Pick said was very, right on, spot on, you know, I mean, first of all, if we do get to a point that there's some tweaking there with licensing and stuff, we really need to know who these people are, and, and, and what, you know, their operations, and, and knowing that they are licensed captains, and, and, lack of a better word, jack legs, you know, other than, because it, it, the situation for us is, how do we provide, like in Brad's situation over there? Now, if he has people coming over, he's a brick and mortar store, he gets his, people come in, they want to test a kayak behind his place, that's great, he's paying property taxes, and, you know, but somebody else that's, that's running him someplace else, and not paying any property tax, and not paying anything in, and not licensed, is competing with him, you know?
That's, I agree, that's one thing that needs to be defined.
That's, that's, that's totally nuts. So, we have to, in looking at this, this whole situation, figure out if there is a way, for example, some of the people that just use, that are paying rent, some of the captains are paying rent at different marinas now for their boats, they're charging X. Other guys are just putting in at St. Andrews, leaving their boat and their trailer there all day, taking up parking, they're not paying X. Maybe they go over to Watson Landing. Load your people over there at Watson Landing, but God forbid, I got to pay rent at Watson Landing, well, you know, gas doubled, so it, maybe it's an extra fifty bucks that you got to charge for, for the fishing excursion, but then again, you're, you're giving money to private business to, to, to store your boat. So, so there's probably other ways, I mean, and everybody wants to find the most economical way to run their business, but it can't be on the backs of everybody else, you know? I mean-
I don't think any of us are disagreeing with that, are we?
Yeah.
Yeah, we all agree that regulation and-
So, 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 so let's figure out how we, you know, have private industry, everybody's treated fairly, and if it takes, you know, some licensing or whatever, some tweaking, then we'll look at it. General? Go ahead.
Sir, can I say something?
Yeah, yeah, come on.
You just totally contradict yourself about-
Come, come up here, we can't, we can't hear you, Doug.
Mayor, I want to make a safe, oh, I just received a text from a person watching online, and it might be me, it was clicking my pen, and I apologize, but they said it's affecting the volume of the sound, so I just placed it-
Oh, I don't know, go ahead.
It's probably me.
Give your, give your name and address.
Tim Hanna, fifteen oh eight Lake Avenue.
Okay.
And I have an issue with what you said there, Mayor.
Okay.
About government and private entities competing with each other. Y'all own a marina there, you guys sell ice there, right?
Uh-huh.
There's a convenience store right on Beck Avenue, sells ice. Is that, is that not what we're talking about here?
Well, that's, that's, that's kind of a stretch.
That's a stretch?
Yes, well, it's convenience for people.
It's convenience.
Once you get your boat in the water, I mean, I don't want to get in an argument with you, we don't have time for that, but once you get your boat in the water, and you, you got your gas, or you're getting gas, or whatever, and you go, oh, damn, I forgot my ice, put your boats in the water, so we got ice, you know, I mean, so that, that's a different thing.
Your, your gas at your marina is a dollar and something less, and I'm not saying raise the price, but it means I use the marina, but the gas at the marina there's cheaper than any other marina in Bay County, if I'm not mistaken, okay? So- So, government competing with private end, your, your whole logic of us not paying a slip fee at Panama City Marina, Marina, and somehow that's not fair because someone does pay a slip fee, or Brad Stevens pays property tax so he can use whatever he wants. I pay property tax too, on a business and my home. And living on the water, it's a lot of property tax.
Right, I understand.
And so, to take my boat from Lake Avenue over to Panama City Marina, or the, the St. Andrew Marina, and pick up three people that are gonna eat in all those restaurants, I, I don't see how that's competing, your, your point there, Mr. Mayor.
Well, you're, you're a unique situation, I mean, for you it's not, because you are paying property tax.
Not using the ramp, but there are people that do. And frankly, I, I hear you guys talking about all this chaos at these boat ramps, maybe Carl Gray, I don't go there, I'm at St. Andrew almost every day. I drove there Saturday, there's, there's no one on the boat ramp. The, the courtesy dock is empty, there's parking spaces everywhere, this is on Saturday after the Fourth of July, Fourth of July weekend even, I was down there, it wasn't this chaos. So to start, I think, you know, making a problem when there's not a problem, it's, it seems like that's what's happening, that, that we're, you're trying to...
I wish there wasn't a problem, but, but there is.
What is the problem? That's kinda...
We can, we can, well, General's gonna address that.
Can you guys address that?
Sure, abs- absolutely, appreciate your comments.
Yes.
Mayor, in your defense, I think what you were trying to say is that we don't wanna subsidize the cost for that.
Right, exactly, well, well, that's, and that's what, that's same thing, but go ahead.
Yeah, so, you know, the, the problem was manifest and made light of during, or subsequent to the county taking their action, and people are moving around, people have moved over to, in particular, Carl Gray Park, it started with a single vendor and then it's multiplied to multiple vendors. I think the, when we define, if we wanna define the problem, it goes to, what is our philosophy? What is our philosophy with regard to the use of not government-owned, but citizen-owned property? The citizens of Panama City have invested millions of dollars into the boat ramps and are gonna continue to do that. In fact, this, this commission has tasked the city manager and my office and staff to go and expand the number of boat ramps and launching capability. The objective is to have ten across the city. We want to have access to the bay, we want to have access to the water activities, we want to have thriving businesses. One of the tenants, the four tenants that we have for the city of Panama City in our recovery efforts to be the premier city in Panama, in the Panhandle, is our economy. We want thriving, legitimate, authorized businesses to, to take place. There are a number of individual investors that have bought waterfront property, have sunk millions of dollars into improving those waterfront properties with dock capabilities, they pay taxes on that property, ad valorem taxes, they pay business license, they pay merchant fee, they pay a sales tax, and all of that helps to keep this city thriving. When we have businesses that are unlicensed or are taking advantage of citizen-owned property, like boat ramps, to have private business, it is in direct competition with those established businesses that have invested in those, in this case, the waterfront properties. To the point that the mayor made, using exactly Carl Gray Park as an example, to have a operator that is renting pontoon boats or wave runners or other kayaks or sailboats, whatever, and pays zero to the citizens of Panama City for the use of that facility, pays zero sales tax, pays zero merchant fee tax, pays zero ad valorem tax, and yet his competitor on the other side of ninety-eight next to the Port Panama City has invested in that property, is paying for the property tax and paying the merchant fee. Why should the unlicensed, unregulated activity at Carl Gray Park be advantaged over that which we want, thriving, stable businesses in the community? I think we get cloudy when we start talking about the fact that when I talk to some of the, some of those businesses and they say, well, they don't want to, that, that they don't wanna go to other locations, like for example, I'm not, another location that's on the waterfront that has docking capability, they don't wanna go there because they don't wanna pay rent to that owner to use their dock. But yet they don't wanna pay rent to the citizens of Panama City for using their boat ramp. I think that's just fundamentally wrong. I think it's imperative that we create a balanced and equitable playing field for competition of business to take place. And when it's being subsidized, essentially subsidizing these businesses that are taking place on public property, I think that's fundamentally unhealthy to a, an economy that we're striving for. I think philosophically, the objective of this commission is to drive down ad valorem, the property tax for every person that owns property in the city of Panama City, that has been a stated objective repeatedly by this commission. In order to do that, the most equitable taxation policy is a consumption tax, is based on merchant fee, it's based on sales tax, it's based on the consumption of an item. If you choose to consume that item, you pay a tax to that. If you choose not to consume that item, you're not paying any tax, so you're not harmed. But the only way to drive down ad valorem and property tax is to have a more equitable licensing and taxation methodology, which is merchant fee. We have a number of businesses that are taking place inside the city of Panama City that are not remitting their merchant fee. They may be paying sales tax, but they're not doing their merchant fee. They may even be collecting it from the citizens, but not dispersing it to the city. We have, we have a thriving industry here in our community, we are, one projecting, projection is that there's been over a billion dollars worth of sales taking place inside the city limits of Panama City in the last year. That's significant. If the city is going to continue to prosper and indeed provide the services that our citizens not only expect, but absolutely deserve, it takes revenue. And the revenue, in my estimation, should not be on the backs of the property owners, it should be on the consumption methodology. The objective of today's activity, to have this first reading, was to indeed absolutely say what our position is relative to licensed businesses operating in the city of Panama City, and what we say against unlicensed businesses in the city of Panama City. I absolutely have no issues with creating a, a methodology, a licensing, a permitting, whatever it needs to be, but it needs to be equitable, because otherwise we're creating a disadvantage to those that are investing tons of money into, in this case, in this scenario, waterfront property. And I can envision at a park, for example, for example, in a Beach Drive, the city has leased Beach Drive property from Mr. Kingston. If we allow unlicensed activity to take place at that space, all of those businesses along Beach Drive that have invested money into that activity is gonna be disadvantaged. I mean, when you go and spend twenty thousand dollars to go and lease property and build a ramp and other things that you have to do, put in some parking, and then you've got somebody that's competing right next door to you, you know, on a city-owned property for a two hundred dollar permit, really? Is, are we creating a, a fair and equitable environment for business to thrive? I would say no. I think we've got to look at this more realistically, I like what Mr. Pick said, I think absolut- absolutely we want more charter vessels, but there's a cost to that. There's a cost for having that boat ramp there, there's a cost for having that floating dock there, there's a cost for maintaining safety, there's a cost to, there's actually an indirect cost to all of those businesses in, over in St. Andrews, because now all of these people are being picked up at the St. Andrews Pier or at the boat ramp, and guess what? Their vehicles are staying there in the parking lots for the next six to eight hours as they're out on a fishing excursion, and I'm glad they're on the fishing excursion, but there's zero dollars coming to the city of Panama City from that retail activity. And yet, the secondary impact to all of those businesses in St. Andrew is less available parking for the businesses that thrive on rotation of individuals coming through and parking there. You want to have parking turned frequently, that means you have more customers coming into restaurants and to the kayak places and to other shops there, as opposed to having to find further and further places to park. One of those, and since we're talking about St. Andrews, obviously, one of the objectives is to create a parking garage. This is exactly why we need to do this, and a concierge service where all of, if we have a parking garage, for example, behind Hunts, we're on that city-owned property, we could have a parking garage there, we could have all of the charter boat customers park there, because they're gonna park there all day while they're out fishing, and leave the marina parking and the Bayview parking and the closer end parking for the restaurants and the other shops to have rotation of customers. It's just a fundamental philosophy conversation, and the objective of today was to start that dialogue. I absolutely respect all of our charter boat captains, I want them to thrive, I want to be, as we know, a, a much more thriving, working marina there at St. Andrews. But what we have created, what has been created, not that we created, what has been created is a unlevel playing field for legitimate businesses to operate inside the city limits of Panama City by allowing subsidization of unlicensed, unpermitted activity at public spaces. That's a philosophical conversation.
So maybe we have a meeting similar to what we did when we were doing the alcohol ordinance?
Absolutely.
And invite the people that, that affects, because, you know, you have to have an appointment to catch a red snapper now, what is it, it ends the August seventeenth. So it has forced a lot more pressure for people that wanna fish, fishing in the bays, because you can only fish out in the Gulf and keep stuff with what you have to pay for such a limited period of time. So, I understand all that, I personally understand all that. So, let's, let's maybe set up a time?
Sure.
Over this next two-week period where we invite Mr. Hanna, some of the other gentlemen that, that can come and, and voice their opinions about what we need to do, and we could tweak some stuff and, and try to, try to get closer to a solution, 'cause obviously we need, we need one.
It, it may be difficult in the next two weeks because we have a number of performing arts events that are taking place and workshops that are taking place, but I will schedule, before we...
Well, when we, when we can do it.
Yeah.
So nothing's gonna pass.
Advertise it and put it out there so everybody that wants to participate in the workshop can do that. We want to have a well-crafted ordinance that meets the needs. I absolutely agree, what takes place at the beach does not mean it needs to take place here at the city of Panama City. But what we do want here in the city of Panama City is an equal playing field for legitimate businesses to operate and not be undermined by unlicensed, unregulated activities, and number two, we wanna find a way to drive down ad valorem so that Mr. Hanna, good friend of mine, doesn't have to continue to pay high property taxes.
Very good.
I know everybody's done with this, but I just, I feel like everything that was talked about, there's just so much going on and different things, I just wanna say that the boat captains, the people I've talked to, they are not, also not against regulation, okay? So it kinda sounds like we, you know, it's like a free-for-all out there, these, these guys are not against that either. I don't, I, I don't necessarily agree with everything, I do agree, like, the consumption tax and the merchant tax, I mean, I think, I don't even think they'll disagree with that. What I'm confused about is you've got, like, this whole thing includes, like, yoga and downtown, you know, by, you know, destination Panama City and all that, like, at the same time, we're, to me, my philosophy is that we're supposed to be creating a place where all businesses thrive, whether you've got the money to build a dock and have waterfront property, or you have another means of doing it by getting a permit, you know, or whatever it is to use those boat ramps and pay your merchant fee or whatever. It's the same thing, that's like saying, the people who we're promoting, sunset yoga, that's like saying, well, they don't have a brick and mortar store, so we, we don't, you know, I don't know if it's fair and equitable for them either to have, there is so much involved in this, I'd almost like to see the boat ramps and the marinas addressed by themselves, and then maybe the green space and the parks, 'cause it's like, these are two, they're like two totally different things going on, and we, it, it's clear to see, listening to them and listening to, to you guys talk and us talk, that there's just, there's so much stuff that's not defined on, if you have brick and mortar, you know, if you have the, you know, if you live in the city of Panama City, you know, is there a discount for you because you're already paying tax? I mean, you know, there's just so much going on here that I think we just, maybe if we, I, I would like to just see the marinas and the boat ramps be addressed, we can keep that nice and clean, and then if we have a, and that includes kayaking, jet skiing, you know, all the things that are, are there, but, you know, I don't know, there's just a lot, a lot going on there. I don't know if everybody agrees or disagrees with that, but I think that'd be the best way to do it.
That's why we have first readings, so yeah, I mean, very valid point. James, you got one minute, come on, hurry up.
And to add while James is coming up, I, I don't think this is a, is a hard thing to resolve.
No.
I, I think paid parking, one, resolves a lot of the, a lot of the parking issues that we've got, it allows us to push people to certain areas, to park for longer term, short term, up close, same thing, you know, that was being shared earlier. And I think that, you know, regulation through a permitting process allows it to pay, you know, that. I, I don't think this has to be like some kind of like crazy, major, major thing.
I would like to add before James talks, though, right before you said it, I'd written it down on my paper about the parking garage, I mean, if, my goal is that Sun Jammers and retail and all them are hustling and bustling, and these guys are too. If we've got a parking problem, who is that on? The businesses can't create it, the charter guys can't create it, if we wanna, if we want St. Andrews, we want all the retail, we want, we need to get on a parking garage.
Yep.
We're creating the environment for retail, we gotta create the parking.
That's right.
Okay, no, totally agree with you.
So, after listening to you, I, I have a couple of points. When you go to look at fees, you may or may not know, but the state of Florida charges us two hundred and five dollars a year for a four-person license and four hundred and five dollars a year for a six-person license. The Coast Guard charges us ninety-five dollars every five years for our license. So, I, I don't want y'all to get all the way out of hand with these things. It's Texas, they charge twelve hundred dollars...
Fifty thousand dollars a year.
Well, they charge twelve hundred dollars a year in Texas for a guide license, so, you know, it doesn't need to be like that.
Well, that's why the workshop is necessary, 'cause we don't know any, I don't know any of that, so...
Two, two other things real quick, we think that there's probably a, a lot of people that have gotten run off the beach that are launching at Carl Gray and picking up in St. Andrews. So that's something that might be, you wanna, you might wanna look at. And the last thing, this is probably more my favorite than anything else, is I've lived in my house for thirty years and paid city taxes for thirty years. I rent a boat slip from a gentleman who pays city taxes down on Lake Huntington, and I think my fee should be less than, than somebody who lives on the beach, who operates their business on the beach, because they're not paying taxes. I agree with that a hundred percent. And those are just things that I would put in there, got no problem with paying you guys some money every year.
Ah, that's, nobody, nobody...
All right, if anybody else wanna come up, we'll, we already, we opened it back up, so...
Mr. Mayor, why, he's coming up. Now, like I said, I'm not a fisherman and I'm not a boater, but I am a voted member of this edifice, and I would like people to send me an email and let me know what you think.
Okay.
I'm not a resident of Panama City.
Name, name and address.
Okay, Brian Sullivan, six oh two Timmy Street, Lynn Haven, Florida. I actually had a slip downtown Panama City, it got destroyed, a lot of us actually had slips down there. I'm actually fishing, Dolphin Tours, I actually don't pay taxes on the fishing because Florida law states that we do not charge taxes on fishing, but Dolphin Ta-, Dolphin Tours, I have to pay taxes on that, so I actually have to sit there and decipher each one that I do, I have to actually sit there, and, and since we do not have the city marina and we do not have our slip, it actually takes me about four hours longer a day, hey, getting ready than I'd, than I normally would if I had a slip. So, it's not fair to be punished for there's no marinas in Panama City. If we had slips, we would all be renting, I'm actually on the waiting list at St. Andrews. If Panama City came back, we'd be down there, so I just wanted to address that.
We will be back.
All right, thank, thank you, sir. Come on up.
There's so many different points.
Oh, yeah.
Russell Frazier, too.
Russell Frazier, 202 Mill Creek Drive, Panama City, Florida. Also have rental property in Panama City, so I pay taxes. I've, I've been a licensed captain since 1995. My parents or my grandparents kept their boat at the city marina. I kept my boat at the city marina until Hurricane Michael. I would like the opportunity to rent another slip from either the city marina or St. Andrews Marina. How do I go about doing that?
Yeah. Great question.
Good question.
Well, there are, the only marina that we have that's operating is St. Andrews. There is a waiting list, and you're happy to put your name on the waiting list for that as spaces become available, but that is where we are right now.
But there are slips there. There are boats there operating.
Right.
That's correct. That's right.
So.
It's just a waiting list.
They're already rented.
How do you go about, I mean, discrimination? I mean, how do you get, how do you get a slip? How do other people get a slip? When we had a slip before Hurricane Michael.
They had slips too, sir. They were over there in St. Andrews.
So.
They were already there, I think.
Why were we not, why did we not have the opportunity? And there are people that have slips there now that didn't have a slip in St. Andrews before the hurricane.
I must have just rented it. It was first come, first served.
But I would like the opportunity to have a slip.
Absolutely. And just, we'd be happy to put your name on the list for that, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And then I do note that there are other marinas that are available in the community that are commercial, that other operators have, and they're happy to lease those as well.
Yep.
Okay. So I think we all agree. It, it needs some work and-
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, it, it may not be at the next meeting. You know, we're, we'll, we'll get it addressed and, and we'll get in touch with, we'll put a notice out when we have a, a meeting like we did for the alcohol ordinance deal. And, and in the meantime, I thank everyone for their, for their comments. That's why we're here. We want to get everybody's opinion, and none of us are experts, even though sometimes we act like it.
Yeah. But Mr. Mayor, with your permission and that of the commission, I would ask that we not put this on the agenda for the 26th and instead to allow time for a workshop to take place, would advocate that this be put on for consideration on the 9th of August.
Okay. Can I get a motion, Josh, for that?
Go make a motion.
All right.
Yep, go ahead.
All right. We got a motion to have a second?
Uh, yes, second.
Okay. Motion and second, and that is that this, we will have a workshop in between now and August 9th, and it's not going to be on the next commission meeting. So anyone that's not here today that wanted to come here today but couldn't come here today, tell them it's not going to be voted on in the next meeting.
Um, how do we get that information to them? Like, maybe the organization that Billy was talking about? Is that, is that the largest?
That's part of them.
We'll put it on the, we'll put it on the city website, and we will get notices out. That's Caitlin's job.
Just like we notice everything.
She'll get it out. Okay.
I'll post it. I'll make sure.
For those of you, I would follow the Panama City Facebook page would al, would also do it. That's probably better suited for some.
If all you guys could give us your phone numbers to Jan.
I think that's a great idea, Billy. Before you, before you go today, make sure that Jan's got your number. We'll, we'll personally call people because we know this affects your livelihood. We'll go out of our way to make sure that you have the opportunity. Okay?
That's what we need to do.
Yep.
We need, we need to vote on that. We have a first and a second.
Yes, for the, for the workshop. We've got a motion and second.
For, for rescheduling it to the second.
Rescheduling to August 9th and then a workshop in between.
That's correct.
We have a motion and second. Any other discussion?
If we're not prepared by the 9th, then we need to be honest about that and, you know, so that's the goal, though.
That's correct. That's, that's a good point. Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
Next item, commission is requested approval of First Amendment to the Southern Group of Florida Agreement. Southern Group is a lobbyist firm that Panama City and Bay County have used for a few years, especially in light of post-storm recovery issues. They assist us with legislation with the Florida House and the Florida Senate and the governor's office. They've been very successful. The city has been with its representatives' assistance, and the request is to approve an amendment increasing the fee from $6,000 a month to $7,500.
Motion on 7B.
Yes, I'd like to move approval.
Second motion, mayor.
Good investment.
Second motion, mayor.
Thank you, sir. Any discussion? Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
General?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Draw your attention to item 9A, which is the consideration of the Community Development Block Grant, Grant Disaster Recovery, CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Match Budget Amendment Resolution, number 20220712.1 for the 13 lift station projects. This is for Phase 1. As background information, on February 9th, 2022, City of Panama City was awarded the CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Match in the amount of $6,625,626 for the lift stations projects. The budget amendment is for the non-federal local 25% cost share of Phase 1, which is the design for the two-phase project in the amount of $656,603. It's my recommendation that we move forward and do this budget, budget resolution, and before doing so, I do want to thank publicly Governor DeSantis and our Director Eagle for finding ways to help this community recover and awarding the matching grant. This is a huge benefit to the citizens of Panama City.
There you go. Here, motion on 9A.
I'll move a motion.
Second a motion, mayor.
Discussion. Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
General?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. Draw your attention to item 9A, which is the consideration of the Community Development Block Grant, Grant Disaster Recovery, CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Match Budget Amendment Resolution, number 20220712.1 for the 13 lift station projects. This is for Phase 1. As background information, on February 9th, 2022, City of Panama City was awarded the CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant Program Match in the amount of $6,625,626 for the lift stations projects. The budget amendment is for the non-federal local 25% share cost of Phase 1, designed part of a two-phase project for 13 lift stations. Item 9B is similar. It's the consideration for the CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant Match Budget Amendment Resolution, number 20220712.2 for the fire stations, number 1, 2, and 6, for the wind retrofit, retrofit and the generator for each of those locations. On December 16th, 2021, the City of Panama City was awarded the CDBGDR Hazard Mitigation Grant in the amount up to $167,248 for fire stations 1, 2, and 6 for the wind retrofit and the generators. The budget amendment is for the non-federal local 25% cost share in the amount of $159,838.93. With that, it's my recommendation we move forward and adopt the resolution.
Motion on the resolution?
Motion to approve, mayor.
Second?
Second to motion.
Discussion. Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Resolution 20220712.2, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 2122 budget for the non-federal local 25% share cost of the fire stations 1, 2, and 6, wind retrofit and generator project.
Item 9C is consideration to approve a budget amendment Resolution 20220712.4 to deposit funds received from the Prussor Research Group Incorporated in the amount of $3,502.91. As background information, the City of Panama City Police Department maintains a memorandum of understanding with the Prussor Research Incorporated in regards to the company's scientific study of seatbelt enforcement under contract with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. And per the MOU, the Panama City Police Department is entitled to grant funds distributed by Prussor Research. The duties required by the police department fall under the normal operating procedures during an officer's patrol and have required no additional expenditure of manpower. Therefore, the city is requesting the grant funding account for the operating expenses to be used at a later date in an appropriate project as governed by the MOU and determined by the police department. With that, it's a recommendation that we accept the budget resolution from the Prussor Research Group in the amount of $3,502.91.
Motion on 9C?
Motion to approve, mayor.
Second to motion.
Discussion. Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Resolution 20220712.4, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 2122 budget for the acceptance of a memorandum of understanding in the amount of $3,502 for participation in scientific studies, seatbelt enforcement for the Prussor Research under contract with the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. Funds will be spent later on appropriate project as governed by the MOU.
Item 9D is consideration to approve the budget amendment Resolution 20220712.5 to utilize state forfeiture funds to purchase medical response accessories for one of the Panama City Police Department's ATVs in the amount of $3,335. As background, this request is to transfer state forfeiture funds to equip one of our Panama City Police Department's ATVs with a rescue skid and storage tray that are specific to medical emergency response. These items will follow, allow the officers to be prepared to provide immediate medical treatment and transportation in the field where EMS may not be readily available or delayed. With that, it's a recommendation we approve the resolution in the amount of $3,335.
Motion on 9D?
I'll move a motion.
Second a motion, mayor.
Discussion. Call a roll.
Commissioner?
With one ATV would be enough to cover the whole area?
We're, we're kind of growing that capability. Right now, we, as you know, this, we're very grateful to the commission in approving the acquisition of, I think we have four ATVs now that we've acquired. One of these will be dedicated for the ability to have medical transport, and that's what this would, would do.
Okay.
And, and Mr. Commissioner, Mr. Brown, the, you know, as we increase our ATV fleet, which I anticipate we will, that we will continue to assess how many more of these equipped ATVs for medical response that we would need.
I guess when I read this, I was, had that on my mind, if we have two accidents or two something, that we may need more than one.
Yes, sir.
Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
General, could I ask Brandy a question? Brandy, do we, when we have these budget amendments, is there a limit that we have to vote on? I mean, I know this is like $3,000. The other one was $3,000. Is it?
Because it's any, any dollar amount over zero, basically, that we're, we're gonna spend that's not already in the budget, then we need to increase the budget for that amount, even though it's only $3,500.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
The board, uh, commission has adopted Resolution 20220712.5, a resolution providing for the amendment approved fiscal year 2122 budget for approval to use state forfeiture funds to purchase medical response accessories for a police department ATV in the amount of $3,000.
$3,335.
Yes. Follow-up question, I think, could we group these smaller ones together instead of having to do each one of them individually?
Yeah, we can.
But we still have to read all that stuff.
We just have to read each one or just?
If you, for some reason, didn't want to approve one, I can, I don't know why you would, but.
Yeah, I mean, I think on the smaller ones, I think that's where, you know, it's six figures and above, something like that.
To the mayor's point, we still got to read.
Still got to read the resolution.
That's right.
Okay. I'm just trying to expedite, but that's, you know, government doesn't, government never expedite.
It's a state law.
We could change our charter.
That's a state law, sir.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Item 9E, consideration to approve a budget amendment and resolution, number 20220712.6 for the IDC Commerce Road and the Blackwater Road Capital Projects for accounting purposes. As you know, this board approved both of those road projects. This budget resolution would be in the amount of $3,244,790.
Your motion on 9E?
Make, make a motion, mayor, for the approval?
I'll second.
Discussion. Call a roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes 5-0.
Commission has adopted Resolution 20220712.6, a resolution providing for the amendment of the approved fiscal year 2122 budget for the IDC Commerce Road and the Blackwater Road Projects.
Item 9F is consideration of the approval to award bid number PC 22-037 for the Millville AWT Facility UV Replacement to J&amp;P Construction of Tuscaloosa, Alabama, in the amount of $2,1,000. This item came up before your, for your consideration at the last meeting, and you asked to delay so I could gain some additional information. We've been able to work with the county and have continued to receive information up to, including information as late as this morning with regard to that. There is a possibility, but we don't know definitively, that we could migrate into the AWT. As you know, we were very fortunate from the state legislature to gain a $1.5 million study to do the Millville wastewater treatment relocation study to determine several courses of action. Do we continue to keep the Millville wastewater treatment where it is and harden it and invest in it? Do we move the flow to the AWT in partnership with the county and the consortium of city partners there? Do we redirect some of the flow to St. Andrews? Do we create a new wastewater treatment plant? All of these are going to be definitively evaluated in the study. Additionally, if we do go to the AWT under an emergency purposes, they think that they Additionally, if we do go to the AWT under an emergency purposes, they think that they could absorb some of our capacity, or, excuse me, some of the demand that we would place on their capacity, not a hundred percent. So we would have to, as we did the thirteen lift stations, some of those lift stations are actually contemplating separating the flow that actually goes to Millville and redirecting that flow of raw sewage back to the Twenty-third Street mill, uh, plant so that we can start absorbing the capacity there and reduce the demand on Millville, which would be potentially a reduction of demand ultimately placed on the AWT if we go that route. It's, uh, it's, uh, the point of connection, and I appreciate Mr. Henry when he shared that last, at the last meeting, and, uh, we did some research, actually, in cooperation. We do have a discharge line that goes adjacent to the West Rock location and eventually goes out to the bay as a discharge line. We could tap into that discharge line and go into the active line with, that goes, that's a county line that actually takes untreated sewage and goes to the Military Point AWT. It's a lot more, probably more information you really want to know, but the point is, it's, it's really important, it's, it's, it's one thing to make the connection, it's another to have to flow it. We would have to actually create lift stations to help move the flow that's currently aggregated at Millville Treatment Plant and now pump that further all the way to Military Point at Tindal Air Force Base. It's not undoable, but it's not an overnight solution. It must be, in my estimation, to be prudent, it must go through the study process to be evaluative, to determine the cost benefit ratio to each of those alternatives that I described, and to ensure that we continue to meet our, not only current demands on the system, but future growth demands, which we're all anticipating. That said, it's still, we're under a consent order with the DEP with regard to ensuring that the UV lighting system is replaced. This is a system that is portable, so if we do go out to the AWT, we could take this out to them and help to treat microbiologics before they discharge into the bay. Or it could be relocated to another wastewater treatment plant if we choose to go that route, for example, hypothetically, in Panama City North. So it would not be a wasted investment. Lastly, it would meet our requirements with DEP under the consent order, and we have until December of this year. We're already under an extension on that consent order for this activity. It would allow us to get this done by December. Otherwise, we're subjected to potential fines and penalties as well as, uh, potentially denying any future permits for growth within the city until we get this done. All that said, I think it's a prudent expenditure. It's being funded through the state revolving fund, so we already have the benefit of having a seventy-five percent, or, excuse me, a twenty-five percent reduction of the fee on this, once we complete the SRF expenditures, because that's a twenty-five percent forgiveness on that. So I think for all the right reasons, we need to move forward on this, it meets our DEP requirements, it continues to ensure that the Millville wastewater treatment plant is operating as designed and currently permitted, with a view of having the flexibility to move this asset in the future.
Motion on nine F.
Let me approve. Second a motion, Mayor.
So I just wanted to, that sounded very pre-planned, my goodness.
Ask, ask Michael.
I listen, Michael and I have had lots of conversations about this. There's only, I forget all what's on the table right now. The only thing that you say that still concerns me is that we're gonna wait till the study's done about Millville, because just, I mean, I know that, to me, these are two different things. To me, this is an emergency, because today it's this two million dollars, tomorrow it's gonna be something else, and then something else, something else.
It's because that plant is failing.
This is an emergency to me, and you're telling me this, you know, UV can go to the next way, even if we're helping the county out, whatever, I don't care. But what I, what I'm concerned about is that we're gonna be like, let's, I, I do not think we need a study to hook up, we, if they, they know what capacity they can do, do for us, right, and then we know what we'd have to push back. To me, the study is about the future of the growth, and so we, we know that we are interested in Panama City North, right? So that, it feels like it's two separate things.
Well, I can understand that.
Do we know that we don't need lift stations to push it? Isn't that what the study's about?
It's gonna be, it's not just the study, but it also is the engineering design for those component parts.
That's what we need.
Well, it's
That was one of the things that Mark added when we were talking, too. So the study dollars can, don't just go towards studying. So what he has communicated back to me was that we will take some of those study dollars and we will engineer this solution.
Okay, that's
That's part of this.
Because you know how this goes. It'll just be forever, and I think this is something we need to start engineering now.
I don't disagree, and, and, I mean, that's why shortly after the storm, I said that this is a seventy-two-year-old facility that is need, in massive need of either upgrade or we need to take it off of the water's edge. I mean, it was built back when technology was not on our side, and that's why it went to the water.
Well, I just don't wanna, I don't want to wait for a study to finish when we can do engineering to go.
I would agree with you.
That's all I'm asking, because I don't want to sit here and it come back again because we were like, well, we're waiting on this study, you know? It's like, we can have, we've got enough qualified engineers around here that we could certainly do a task order to get that all worked out.
Well, we finalized the sub-receiving agreement with the DEP on this one point five million dollars, so now we can, we're working on the scope of work for the RFQ to get that engineering services. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that, I think that's very important.
It is, it's critical.
The county is at least reasonably confident that they could utilize the, this specific UV treatment possibly at, at AWT. I think we got one point five million in capacity. I think we're trying to figure out a way that we can send the rest of Millville's capacity to St. Andrews.
Yeah.
And so it's, this is not an unrealistic.
I agree.
This is very realistic for us to be able to do, but they, they do need time to do it, and so, and I understand that, and I think these two weeks, you guys have accomplished quite a bit in your conversations for two weeks' worth of time.
Well, and I appreciate the county and their willingness to help absorb our capacity, but they, they clearly do not have the capacity to absorb one hundred percent of what is being utilized in Millville. That's why the thirteen critical lift station project was so important, to, so that we could start reverse flowing some of that, that's currently going to Millville, to go to the wastewater treatment plant on Twenty-third Street, which has the capacity to absorb that.
All the more reason to be doing all that engineering at the same time.
Exactly correct. Yes, ma'am.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown.
Yes.
Commissioner Rader.
Yes.
Commissioner Street.
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus.
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Yeah.
Walter P. Hendrick, six fourteen, May 24th. I'm hearing you. Do you think they'll let, let y'all put more water than already going into St. Andrews Bay? Because all that sewer that runs from St. Andrews runs into St. Andrews Bay, and I'm wondering, they gonna let y'all increase that flow that you already putting in there? Since you had built that airport, got all those buildings, those houses, that's a whole lots of, whole lots of sewer there, done added to St. Andrews treatment plan already. Reversing, as you said, we do have some lines, you can reverse that water from going, from going to Millville back to St. Andrews. You do have that, you have that privilege to do that, it's there. But I just want to know, you know, I know y'all probably thinking, checking in it, where just, there's just more sewer going into St. Andrews Bay.
There would not be. The current discharge, there are two points of discharge that take place, one from each of the two wastewater treatment plants, and they both discharge, as you indicate, into the bay. This would be the same amount of discharge, it would just not be at the same location. In other words, the discharge from the Twenty-third Street wastewater treatment plant is basically south of the Port Panama City. The second discharge point for the Millville wastewater treatment plant is over south of the Port Panama City East. All you're, all we would be doing is taking the discharge that's currently going into, out of the Millville wastewater treatment plant into the bay and separating it, where some of it will go out of the discharge point from the Twenty-third Street plant, and some of it will go out of the AWT. The net total is still the same amount going into the bay. The difference is, it'll be one less point being discharged into the bay. Now, Governor DeSantis signed State Senate Bill sixty-four, which is directive by twenty thirty-two that all discharge going into state waters must be removed from state waters. And so this would be part of our strategy to help reduce that requirement off of the city.
Well, we're gonna take a five-minute break, please.
Okay.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready to reconvene, Mr. Mayor, and thank you very much for the break. Draw your attention, item nine G, with consideration of approval for the demolition removal and disposal of a 28,292 square foot church facility at 2511 East Third Street to breaking ground. The City of Panama City, through the city's purchasing division, solicited bids from experienced and qualified contractors to provide the demolition services for this address. This is an unfit, unsafe structure. It's gone through the code enforcement process, and with that, it's a recommendation that we approve to the lowest bidder, which is break in ground in the amount of $132,500.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine H is consideration of approval of change order number three for the Bollards and Pat Eyes project to the Eastern Shipbuilding Group Incorporated in the amount of $399,951 in accordance with the change order number three, which is approved and recommended by DRMP, which is the CEI Services for the City of Panama City. This change order is incorporated in the Triumph Gulf Coast Grant and is fully reimbursable. In accordance with the agenda item request, which was dated in January 5th, 2022, the city approved the contract and the scope, which was vetted by DRMP for the Eastern Shipbuilding Group to provide the installation of the Bollards and Pat Eyes for the $599,884. Also, in accordance with another agenda item request, which was dated in April 5th, 2022, the city approved the change order number two, which was vetted by DRMP and Eastern Shipbuilding for the additional existing office building. This change order number three is for Eastern Shipbuilding to provide the fabrication and installation of the fender structure associated with the Ballard and Pat Eye construction. With that, as my recommendation, we move forward with change order number three in the amount of $399,951 to the Eastern Shipbuilding Group Incorporated.
Motion on nine H?
Move approval, Mayor.
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine I is the pre-demolition work for the existing Panama City Marina Civic Center. As background information, the city solicited proposals for architectural and engineering services for the pre-demolition work for the existing Marina Civic Center. JRA was the only A and E firm that submitted a proposal. JRA and their consultants are well qualified to perform the work, and their firm fixed fee price was $52,062, $62.50, which appears to be fair and reasonable. With that, it's a recommendation that we move forward with the contract awards to JRA Engineering Services.
Motion on nine I.
A motion to approve, Mayor.
This, I'll second it, but this is just for engineering.
This structure is going to require a demo plan that is crafted by an engineering firm to be able to do it. That's all this is doing, is starting that process. We're approximately, approximately day fifty-five in the sixty-day timeframe that the FEMA arbitration panel has to make a determination on our arbitration requests. With that, we know that the structure will need to be demolished regardless of what that outcome is. And this is starting that process so that we can do the planning and have an engineered, approved set of plans for how to demo that structure.
Thank you, sir.
How long does this process take? The demo, the demo plan part, like how long does that take?
What, two or three months?
About three, about three months, three quarters.
Three months, okay.
Call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Item nine J is the consideration of a mid-year inflationary adjustment to the city's pay plan. As background information, requesting your approval to increase the overall pay rates for the all-city employee of the City of Panama City by 4.5% effective immediately, this date, July 12th, 2022, due to the inflationary pressures that we have experienced across this nation. As of May 2022, the Consumer Price Index for the Southeast Region of the United States was 9.2% over the previous year, causing increased financial pressures for our team members. These adjustments are necessary due to the increases in basic goods that all of our citizens are facing, to include our employees, which is inclusive of fuel and housing and other commodities, to maintain their basic living needs. And that, this addition, this adjustment assists our city in being more competitive in recruiting and retaining our current team members. It's a very difficult time for everyone, for sure, but I would humbly request your approval for this mid-year adjustment. This is part of a larger strategy. As I come to you with the budget for next year, one of the things that we're looking at is, since the state has approved through the electoral process, a $15 minimum wage, as you can see, we're not even at $15 minimum wage. And so in October, having more of a budgetary outlook and being able to plan fiscally, I intend to make that adjustment at that time, making that recommendation. In the interim, we clearly have our teammates, as all citizens, have realized a 9.2% reduction, effective reduction in their buying power. This only goes halfway to meet that need.
Motion on nine J?
I'd like to move approval of that and not to thank staff for doing this.
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
I had to do this at the funeral home, too. People don't even have the money to drive to work.
What, what does this do to the, like, what's the, what does, how much does this change the budget just for that part? Like, what does that work, or do we not know that yet?
Well, we do, and it's only, we're doing it from today through the rest of this budget year, and we have, because we have a number of vacancies, we're taking the unrealized expenses to be able to do it. It's approximately $2 million to be able to do this, to take care of our employees.
From this point to the end of the year? Interesting.
Two million for the total?
For the total, I'm sorry.
No, for the next three months.
For the, for annually, it's two million, so it'd be, you know, 25% of that, so, you know, $500,000.
I say, you might as well get a pretty good.
No, there, no.
Well, still, though, I mean, even $2 million in the budget, that's, I mean, it's great. It's what we need to do, but I just wanted everybody, because it's, it's kind of good to think of it like that when we're figuring out the budget for other things.
That's right.
Like, other things that maybe we're not going to do because we're going to be paying our people better, which is great.
That's right.
We have to compete with hiring people.
Well, we do, and, you know, right now, we're, we have fifty-one authorized positions in our rideaway crews, and we're short thirty-one. In fact, this past week, a number of our employees went out and helped our rideaway crews to do mowing around the city. We're short sixteen police officers. We're short, I think it's five firefighters. I mean, it's, we need to be competitive, and this is a very difficult time economically for the nation and all of our citizens locally, but this certainly will assist our employees in a marginal way as we strive to move toward that minimum $15 an hour.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you. With that, I move your attention to item nine K, which is the consideration of approval to purchase one crane truck from Ingram Equipment Company in the amount of $166,985.77. As background information, through the city public work department, a request for proposal was advertised to review competitive proposals for the purchase of a crane truck. The city received two sealed bids, which were evaluated and met the minimum requirements for the RFP. With that, it's a recommendation that we go with the bid provided by Ingram Equipment Company in the amount of $166,985.77. This crane truck will be utilized by our utility department to assist. This is one of the, they use to remove pumps and other activities out of the deep well, so this is a necessary piece of equipment.
Motion on nine K?
Yes, I'd like to move approval, and it is budgeted.
Second motion, Mayor.
Discussion, call the roll.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Rader?
Yes.
Commissioner Street?
Yes.
Commissioner Halagus?
Yes.
Mayor Bernicki?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Buell, which one of these do you want to speak on? Is it, is it the one coming up, the first one?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Well, let him, let him go ahead and do the first reading, and then, and then you can, just sit right here, and then you can do that. I knew you were here waiting for one of them. Go ahead, because these are all first readings today, and normally people show up at the second reading, but, but we'll. You're good, not, not a problem.
I'd rather you talk the first one.
Yeah, me too.
So with that, the first, item ten A is first reading ordinance three zero seven seven point one, the voluntary annexation of point six eight acres of property located at two zero eight West Baldwin Road, Panama City. As background information, the applicant is requesting an annexation and future land use change and rezoning to utilize city services. This item was reviewed by the planning board on June 13th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation we conduct the first reading of the request for annexation.
First reading, ordinance number thirty seventy seven point one, and ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of point six eight acres of unincorporated property located at two zero eight West Baldwin Road, Bay County, and to the city. As further defined, amending the ward's boundaries of the city includes said land and providing for an effective date.
My name is Buell Harper. I live at three fourteen West Baldwin Road, and somehow I have an investment in this city with all the office buildings that I paid taxes on for a number of years. And some of you have known me for a long time. Now, what I want to speak to is, there's, there's three of these that come up. It's ten A, ten B, and ten C. They're all together. Is that okay?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. The reason that most people aren't here is that we obtained the agenda from the city planning board, and it said that public comment will be heard at the final reading on Tuesday, July the 26th. I took a chance. I thought maybe I might be able to speak here. The prob, the real problem we have is that many people, let me back up. In the 1970s, Chapman Land Company bought all this area in there from St. Joe Paper Company, and Mr. Chapman developed most of what is known as Forest Park. Some of it he did into small lot communities with utilities from the City of Panama City.
Give some clarification, that's Davis Chapman from Dothan, correct?
That's a different.
It's not the, it's not the Chapman.
You're right about that.
Go ahead, I'm sorry to interrupt.
The corporation, he had two corporations, Chapman Land Company and Dolly Madison Development Company. I don't know why he did, he did all the small subdivision in Dolly Madison Development Company, and the big ones were in Chapman Land Company. And he was a major investment in a large bank in Dothan. I started doing work for him in the 1960s when I moved here, and I did most of this area where we're discussing now, where I live. This was done because there was no utilities, so what he did was he subdivided it into large lots. Most of the lots are in excess of one-half acre, and they, the one-half acre was so that it would meet the state requirements for a septic tank and a well. Where we live now, my wife and I, we have a septic tank and a well, and our property is about 1.5 acres. Now, he recorded, and I just mentioned this to Nev, he recorded restrictive covenants for this area in three separate documents covered. There's approximately thirty homes in this area that is under these covenants. When I brought these, that issue to the planning board, it was kind of like, well, we really just don't care. Doesn't make any difference to me or to us that there's restrictive covenants on these, on these lots. And the covenants is for residential property. No structures shall be erected, all their plant are permitted to remain in any residential building lot other than one detached single-family dwelling. Okay? These covenants run with the land, and all of that was brought to the planning board attention, and like I said, they didn't, well, one, one person made a statement there that, he said, well, I just think that Baldwin Avenue ought to be commercial. Well, no, these are our homes, and we don't desire it to be turned into a commercial area. Personally, if somebody wants to get in the city, that's fine, but for them to turn around and change it from a single-family dwelling to multi-use, that's not fine with me. That's not the area I want to live in, that's not the reason I built a home there, and, and I really wish that the city would reconsider this situation. Now, I don't know what alternatives it are. I know that the city didn't make an agreement with Chapman Land Company, but the landowners did, and when the city changes the use of the land, they are assisting someone to violate the covenants and restrictions that they agreed to when they bought the property. Now, I know this is asinine, but the city right now really needs some lots, someplace that you can launch in the water. Why don't we go down in the Cove and build a large marina in the Cove? That wouldn't go over very big, would it? I'm looking at one person that probably objected real quick. But that's the way we feel about our homes in our area, okay? We do not want them turned into, we got more, we got more, look, if the city wants to help.
Buell, your time's up, so I've, I've let you cover this issue, so I, we, we could talk about it, and we'll talk about restrictive covenants, and we've got, and we're not going to be voting on this today, so we appreciate you bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Do you, do you would like, buy copies of the?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we would.
Oh, yes.
As long as he's got one, he'll get one to all of us.
I'll get it to everybody. He'll make copies for us.
Yep, thank you.
I appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Take care.
So we have the first reading on the annexation ordinance. I will just, if I could address that real quickly. Restrictive covenants are private property rights between individuals, and that it's not something to ignore, but it's not something specifically for the city commission to enforce, but obviously, anything like this that bears on the wisdom of how a piece of property is to be zoned in the future, whether it should be commercial or whether it should stay residential, is all valuable information, but what I will do, and I mentioned to Mr. Harper, I will look at this and, and in particular, how it does or could impact any future decision, and I'll communicate directly with him, as well as anybody else. Thank you. I believe I did.
Yeah, it's already been read.
All right, thank you.
So, item ten B.
All right, thank you. So, item ten B is first reading ordinance three zero seven seven point two, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at two oh eight West Baldwin Road. As background information, it's the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading of ordinance thirty seventy seven point two, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for a parcel of property located at two oh eight West Baldwin Road, Panama City, providing for repealer, repealer, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Just to confirm, I had also had the first reading of thirty seventy seven point one that dealt with the voluntary annexation. Thank you.
Item ten C is first reading of ordinance three zero seven seven point three, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use three, MU three, for the property located at two zero eight West Baldwin Road. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the agenda amendment, annexation amendment agenda request, and it's a recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty seventy seven point three, and ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at two oh eight West Baldwin Road, Panama City, having approximately point six eight acres, mixed use three, providing for severability and an effective date.
Item ten D is the first reading of ordinance three zero seven eight point one, voluntary annexation of point three zero acres of property located at thirteen eleven West 30th Street. As background information, the applicant wants to annex into the city and split the lots into two fifty by one thirty-two-foot single-family residential home lots. This item was reviewed by the planning board on June 13th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty seventy eight point one, and ordinance of the city approving the voluntary annexation of point three acres of unincorporated property located at thirteen eleven West 30th Street and to the city, as further defined, amending the ward's boundaries and to include said land and providing for an effective date.
Item ten E is the first reading of ordinance three zero seven eight point two, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for the property located at thirteen eleven West 30th Street. Background information is the same as I shared in the annexation agenda request, and the recommendation is to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty seventy eight point two, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of residential for a parcel of property located at thirteen eleven West 30th Street, Panama City, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Item ten F is the first reading of ordinance three zero seven eight point three, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of residential two, R two, for the property located at thirteen eleven West 30th Street. Background information is the same as I shared earlier in the annexation agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation we conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty seventy eight point three, and ordinance zoning a parcel of property located at thirteen eleven West 30th Street, Panama City, having approximately point three acres, R two, providing for severability and effective date.
Item ten G is first reading of ordinance three zero seven nine point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at five twelve Craft Avenue. As background information, the information was reviewed by the planning board on June 13th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty seventy nine point one, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at five twelve Craft Avenue, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Continuing the public hearing, item ten H is first reading of ordinance three zero seven nine point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use two, MU two, for the property located at five twelve Craft Avenue. As background information, it's the same as I shared in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance number thirty seventy nine point two, and ordinance zoning parcels of property located at five twelve Craft Avenue, having approximately 1.12 acres, mixed use two, providing for severability and an effective date.
Just to make sure, there isn't anyone here that to speak on any of these, is there? There is, okay, so which one?
Eight, ten I and ten J.
That's the next one.
Okay, all right, so right after, go, go ahead. I want to make sure we didn't blow past you. Go ahead.
So, item ten I is the first reading of ordinance three zero eight zero point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for the property located at nine oh eight East 16th Street. As background information, this item was reviewed by the planning board on June 13th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty eighty point one, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of mixed use for parcels of property located at nine oh eight East 16th Street, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Barbara mentioned nine oh eight East 16th Street, Panama City, Florida. The house that we built was built in 1959, and we moved there when I was two years old. The land was, there was residential houses there, but we are the only house left there, and it's in a light industrial area, and we wanted to change it to mixed use so that if anything happens to our house, we will be able to rebuild it.
That is a very reasonable.
Makes, makes, makes sense.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, item ten J is the first reading of ordinance three zero eight zero point two, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of mixed use three, MU three, for the property located at nine oh eight East 16th Street. It's the same information as I shared earlier in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance thirty eighty point two, and ordinance zoning parcels of property located at nine oh eight East 16th Street, Panama City, having approximately point one four acres, mixed use three, providing for severability and effective date.
Item ten K is the first reading of ordinance three zero eight one point one, amending the future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of public institutional for the following parcels, excuse me, one seven three three six dash zero one zero dash zero zero zero, one seven three three six dash zero two zero dash zero zero zero, one seven three three seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, parcel one seven three four two dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, parcel one seven three five one dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, parcel one seven three four nine dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, parcel one seven three five two dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, parcel one seven three four seven dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, parcel one seven three four six dash zero 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 dash zero zero zero, and parcel one seven three four five dash zero 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 zero.
Could you repeat that?
Forgot a zero.
Zero chance of that happening.
Yes.
Okay. As background information, it was reviewed by the planning board on June 13th, 2022, and the planning board recommended approval unanimously. With that, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
Okay, first reading, I'll incorporate the numbers as read by Mr. McQueen, known as the MLK Property Recreation Area. Ordinance number thirty eighty one point one, and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan future land use map of the city to reflect a land use designation of public institutional for parcels of property located in and around the MLK Recreation Center. located in and around the MLK Recreation Center. Pursuant to the parcel numbers Mr. McQueen has read, Panama City, providing for repealer, severability, and effective date.
Check in. Stephen. Item 10L is first reading of ordinance 3081.2, amending the zoning map of the city to reflect a zoning designation of public institutional, PI, for the following parcels, which are the same parcels I read on item agenda 10K, in and around the Martin Luther King Recreation Center. With that, it's the same information as I shared in the future land use agenda request, and as such, it's a recommendation to conduct the first reading of the ordinance.
First reading, ordinance number 3081.2, and ordinance zoning parcels of property located at the parcel numbers previously read and presented in the ordinance around the MLK Recreation Center, having approximately 2.5 acres, public institutional, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I, in two points, number one, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that we have a new director of our planning department, and it's Michael Fuller, it's in front of us today, and we're really delighted that he has joined the team.
Yeah.
And I think the dynamic duo of Michael, as well as Joanne Haley, will help to lead our planning efforts significantly. I want to thank Joanne for all of her great work standing in the gap and continuing our planning process. She did a brilliant job, thank you so much for doing so.
Yes.
And with that, the only thing that's remaining is a, a separate meeting with the nonprofit. It will take less than five minutes, so I would ask that we just.
One, one small thing, because I know that maybe if I don't talk about it here, I can't get going quicker. The commercial water thing for home businesses, can we get that together and just altogether, maybe just take that out of the ordinance? You know what I'm talking about. So like a home business, if I have an LLC.
Oh, oh, right, right.
Okay, there, people are already being charged for these commercial rates, you know about this, and they're just, they're not, no one's impacting the sewer and water. And I talked to Gray, he's gone already, but I talked to him about it, and he said, "Well, unless there's a way to enforce, like if you have 10 or more people," and we got him. So can we just take that out? That was an ordinance when we didn't have the internet and all this, just that portion. I mean, we'll still have commercial rates.
Right.
For commercial buildings, but can we please do that?
Happy to, happy to pursue that. It will affect our, it, it is small, but we do need to go back and modify the, the rules, because our utility rates are based on the type of parameters that are already languaged in our utility structure. I don't disagree, I mean, it's, there's no difference.
I think you just say home-based businesses, because you wouldn't even know it was there, you know, that, that ordinance was written just brick and mortar, so.
Right, I understand.
I can't think of a single, I, I tried to, I can't think of a single home-based business that would require any impact to the water and sewers. I don't think it will affect, the people who are getting these are people who are only being kind and paying a business license and really doesn't, so, okay, all right, thank you.
Good to hear more, okay. So we're adjourned on the meeting, we're going to start our not-for-profit.